Welcome to our meeting. The time is 7:00 PM. The date is September 24, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki will be absent. Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Landfair.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present.
Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Matthew Gleason, the finance director, Mrs. Stacy Nonhof, the assistant city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. I have been notified by councilmember Nickerson that he is removing consent agenda items 7K, 7M, and 7N. Do the remaining councilmembers wish to remove any other consent agenda items? Hearing none, we will continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
My name is Steve Dowding, 4417 Drake Lane. I would like to speak in reference to item 8B.
Before we continue with our regular agenda, councilmember Hossi has some comments he would like to make. Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just take a brief minute to recognize the recent passing of three past city council members. It's been in the paper this past week or so. Councilmember Don Polly, councilmember Bob Niemann, and councilmember John Gurkey. I wanted to at least share our condolences with them for their families and our appreciation for their service to the city of Grand Island while they served in this capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. We appreciate all who have served our city, and we acknowledge the valuable impact they have had by our good governance. We will now proceed with agenda item 6A, consideration of determining benefits for Foner Park Business Improvement District. This is a board of equalization matter. Is there a motion to leave our regular session and reconvene as a board of equalization? Ms. Kozinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adjourn to the Board of Equalization for the Foner Park Business Improvement District.
Thank you. And Mr. Stelk.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Then as the Board of Equalization, we take up 6A, consideration of determining benefits for Foner Park Business Improvement District. Mr. Gleason, good evening.
Good evening, City Council. Bear with me, I've got a cold going on, so for this one, sitting as the Board of Equalization for appeals and to make sure that we're doing this fairly, the proposed budget for the created ordinance requires that a proposed budget for the district be approved by the BID Board and forwarded to the city council for consideration. We did that at a past meeting. The Foner Park BID Board met and approved the 2425 budget, which provides for special assessments and the amount of $53,202. On August 27, 2024, city council approved the BID budget and set the date for Board of Equalization as today. And I think I forgot to say, in this one, there are, sorry, assessments are paid by property owners based on the front footage of the property. And so owners are billed for the assessment after approval by the city council today. The budgeted assessments of $53,202 would be charged to property owners in the district based on their front footage. Notice was mailed to owners within the BID and published in the Grand Island Independent on September 3, September 10, and September 17, per state statute. The fiscal impact, the change in assessment value, will add $0 of revenue, so they're asking for the same as they did the year before, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Is there a motion to approve 6A, councilmembers? Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass item 6A.
And Mr. Conley.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Now, is there a motion to leave the Board of Equalization and return to our regular Mr. Landfair.
I move we leave the Board of Equalization and return to our normal meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pollak.
And I would second that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We'll now take up the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 7K, M, and N? Ms. Kozinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda, excepting items K, M, and N.
Thank you. Mr. Stelk.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stelk. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Now, we take up 7K, approving bid award water project 2024-LSL-1B lead service line replacement. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is a rebid of a previous attempt to get interest in our lead service replacement work. Right now, we've been through about 19% of the lead service, prospective lead service lines out there. Our goal is to get 10% discovered this year. We've got 19%. Alternatively, our goal is to get through 180 service lines replaced. We're at about 50, which is where this contract comes in. So, when the bids went higher than expected the first time, we interviewed some of the candidates and asked them why, tried to understand, tried to project our intent, and what we were able to do was get a 60% reduction in the rebid process. And in doing so, we set a minimum of 150 services in the contract, which will get us right back on target to where we need to be in year one. The company Myers, out of Broken Bow, has some equipment that allows them to move pretty rapidly. And throughout the process, we also continued to speak with local plumbers and educate them. It's a pretty cumbersome process to get set up. You have to set up with the federal government for the Davis Bacon part of stuff, which is an intensive process. And then you also have to register with the state of Nebraska as a contractor. And so, some of those steps are a little cumbersome, so our intent is to get through this first wave and then hopefully get that interest that we've been after locally in the coming year, because this will keep going. We're going to have, right now, we're running about 58% of what we're uncovering is lead. So, if that continues, we'll be sending out about 1,800 services. So, this will get us to 180.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass 2024-229.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson.
Thank you, Ryan, for sharing this with us. A lot of questions I have about this, and I know it's been quite a while in the process. But my first question is going to be, as these residences have been identified, how will they be informed of the service or the work that's going to be done for them?
So, we've got kind of a multifaceted process. We have a guy, Gus Amador is our guy in the engineering group, but he goes out, he touches base with the homeowners in advance of coming out, reaches out to them, and then the water shop works in tandem to come out and knock out the lead service lines as we go. So, there will be advanced notice. We have door hangers that we notify people when we're in their yards, but it works well. He's bilingual, so we're able to interface with people who are Spanish-speaking and so forth.
Some of these jobs are going to be a little more time, what do I want to say, involved, time involved, because not only will we replace galvanized, but in some cases, you're going to have to replace, or the lead, but we'll have to replace galvanized to the house itself. Is that correct?
Correct. So, if there's lead with galvanized between, very few, there's very few cases in Grand Island where there's lead between the curb stop and the house. There are some. It's predominantly between the curb stop and the main. So, if there's galvanized up downstream from the lead, you're supposed to replace the galvanized as well, because that lead can set into the galvanized. So, in that case, yes.
Do you anticipate these being more than one day, taking more than one?
It depends on the service. Each, like you said, each one's different. Each house is different once you get into it, which is part of the cumbersome process in the, getting people to bid. There's a lot of unknowns. If sometimes, if you're just replacing between the curb stop and the court, you know, that could be a one-day thing. If you're going into the house, it's going to be multiple days probably, because you're going to dig a hole, you've got to disturb the property. So, yeah, each one's going to vary a little bit.
And the water obviously has to be off during this time.
Yes.
So, people may not have water for up to a day.
Correct. And, you know, we'll do our best to accommodate. Sometimes there's things you can do. If we end up being off for an extended period of time, even when we do water main projects, sometimes we'll loop house to house, just so that they can run faucets and stuff, and there's things you can do.
And it's a great project. Obviously, we want it done, but there will be some time involved in it, depending on just how big that project is. People need to know that. Also, when do you think they'll start? You say they've got to get all this preliminary stuff done. Will there be anything done this year, or do you anticipate next spring?
Their goal is to get, it'll probably, to be honest, it'll probably be then, end of October, before we can get mobilized with the contract and they get their work adjusted. But once they go, they're the type entity that'll keep moving as long as the weather allows. So, we hope to get a dent in it this fall yet.
That'll be great. And then, this initial award is for up to 100. You said a minimum of 150, or to a max of 150 for these folks?
Minimum of 150. So, there's unit pricing. So, what helps them spread out their costs is having a floor on the amount they're awarded, because they're taking a risk, because there's some specialty equipment, boring machine that they're buying. So, giving them a floor gives them that protection they need, but yet, as you can see, the number we're doing, it's not going to circumvent local plumbers from jumping in when it allows. So, we'll be going back out next year at some point for more pricing.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. I think, again, it's a great project, and homeowners are going to appreciate it being done as we get rid of lead and this galvanized stuff, but there is going to be maybe a little pain along the way, but in the end, it's going to be well worth it. So, thank you for sharing tonight.
Motion adopted.
Agenda item 7M, approving the 2025 contract with Grow Grand Island. Mr. Gleason.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, council. The city in Grow Grand Island are recommending a one-year extension of the current contract with no other changes to the terms. The extension would provide Grow Grand Island with a fiscal year 25 payment of $500,000 in exchange for their continued service of encouraging immigration, new industries, and investments, the carrying out of a publicity campaign for the purpose of advertising the various agricultural, horticultural, manufacturing, commercial, utility, and other city resources, the promotion of entertainment, agriculture, and livestock shows, trade shows, and similar events to attract visitors to Grand Island, and investment in community development projects and activities that stimulate progress and growth for Grand Island. No more than 10% of the city's funding can be used for employee and operation expenses of Grow Grand Island. I think I might have saw a few have questions for that organization as well.
And Mrs. Brown, you're here in case the council has questions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2024-231.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. And Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I am sat on the board for Grow Grand Island for the last several years, and I'm amazed at the amount of accomplishments that they get done with a bunch of people sitting around the table who are volunteering. And they get a lot of talent from the community, who essentially volunteer their time to make things happen in the community. And so, I think the organization is wonderful. I think what they accomplish is good, and I think it's all rooted in the community. So, I fully support it.
Well said, Mr. Hossi. Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, I want to give Tanya a chance to just share a little more about the organization. We know a little bit about it. We don't hear about Grow Grand Island a lot. Our viewers may or may not know about it. I want to give her a little chance to share really what you are, and what Matt read off was a big, long list of things that you can work on. And I, and that's a lot of stuff. But just wanted to give you a chance to just share some of the successes and this partnership that you've got with the city and how it's going so far.
Okay. Tanya Brown, 611 Sandalwood Drive. And so, yeah, this, we're concluding eight years as a partnership with the city of Grand Island. And I, in preparation for this evening, I pulled our project dashboard, which is something I provide somewhat regularly to our food and beverage oversight committee, but it just basically is a one-sheet. Here's all the projects that we've done in, since our beginning, and whether it was fully funded, partially funded, no funding from food and beverage, so it's a full picture of Grow Grand Island. Because Grow Grand Island does have more than one funding source, so the allocation that we get from the city is one of many funding sources. And so, I was looking at, what have we done over the last eight years? And we've done 22 completed projects. Seven of those did not utilize food and beverage funding at all. We do have some projects still in progress. There are five of those. One of those, five in progress, did not utilize food and beverage funding at all. So, I thought tonight it would be fun to spotlight just a couple of things more recently that Grow Grand Island has worked on. And I'm going to start with what happened yesterday. We have, one of our projects that's currently in progress is a cooperative, degree-based internship project. And it's a multi-year project, and we entered an agreement with Wayne State College. They have a very special internship program where students enroll in a special pathway that they spend three of their four college years doing the academic requirements for their program, and they spend their entire senior year doing an internship in a community. They piloted the program in Norfolk and then brought it, I think it was about two years later, or within, within a year and a half later, brought it to Grand Island for us to consider. And yesterday, we had 44 Wayne State College students visiting our community. The majority of them were freshmen who had enrolled in this program, which means in their senior year, we would anticipate the majority of those being interns in our community. We don't have college here, so think about that for a minute. That's 44 students earning an advanced degree, coming to be an intern in Grand Island for a full year. And stats would show that when students serve an internship such as that, that more than likely, they stay. So, that is a pretty high reward, I think, for that particular project. We will actually have 15 interns that will be here for the academic year 24, or 25, 26, so next fall. They are in their junior year now, and so they will serve their senior year here in Grand Island. We have some internship housing that's being built for them. It's over by the old post office land, and they'll live there for the time that they're here in Grand Island. So, that's when it really begins. We've been working on it for a long time, and we've been waiting for this for a long time, but next academic year, we'll actually see the interns here. And then you can see, based on 15 coming next academic year, and we had 40 visit us yesterday, that gives you some idea of what the ramp-up of this program looks like. So, we're very, very proud of that relationship with Wayne State College, very proud to have a project like that that benefits our community, our work, our businesses, our workforce needs, all of that. So, fun day yesterday. They were here for three hours. We gave them a whirlwind tour, and I think that they walked away quite impressed with Grand Island and what could be part of their future in just a handful of years. So, I wanted to put a spotlight on that. And then, there were two other projects, as I'm looking through the list, that I thought was worth putting a spotlight on while I had the microphone. One of them is the Conestoga Marketplace. When that project came about, that was just really a unique opportunity for Grow Grand Island and the city to really use their partnership in a very unique way to make something very tremendous happen. And so, when that opportunity came up, we were more than happy to step up and be one of those partners that helped pull off that project. But that was really the first time that I can recall, and I've been part of this all eight years, first time I can recall that type of partnership that occurred with us. And so, I thought that one was worth talking about. And then, really recently, as in July and August, we took on the campaign for the Good Life for Grand Island. That is going to be transformational. That's the key word associated with Good Life District. It's going to be transformational. It's going to occur over 30 years, and you just, it's just hard to even grasp what that's going to mean. But recognizing that we could play that advocacy and education role for the city, because we were all in this, we all made it happen, we were very, very proud and pleased to be able to step up and do that. So, those are just three things that I pulled from it. I'd be happy to answer questions about any of our projects, but at this point in time, you know, we are looking at a one-year extension. We went into your budget cycle looking for what we had done in the past, which was the two plus two. And due to all the unknowns associated with the legislature and what's going to happen with taxation, it just seemed to make good sense to just, let's continue our partnership. Let's continue doing what we're doing, and let's face that negotiation next year. So, that's why you have the one-year continuation in front of you tonight. So, again, I'm more than happy to answer questions. I think our partnership has grown and matured over those eight years. I think there's so much more that we can do. So, from Grow Grand Island's perspective, we look forward to continuing our partnership. And I do want to thank, yeah, Chuck has been part of, he's been a liaison on our Grow Grand Island Executive Committee for many years. Mark Stelk, I want to say thank you as well. We have talked many times with our core partners about the value that we see in having the liaisons participate at the executive committee level. Certainly, they don't vote on anything, but having the input and the insight and being able to, like Chuck was saying, sit around a table and just talk about things, and being able to get all that perspective out there has been extremely valuable. We also have Ron Peterson, who serves in a liaison role with Hall County Commissioners as well, and Patrick Brown attends our meetings as part of the administration. So, the blend that we have when we do sit around the table is pretty amazing with our core partners, all of our members that are just part of the business community, community leaders, and the liaisons. So, we are a tremendous asset, I believe.
I would agree. And I would just say that I didn't know up until a few months ago that you had other resources besides the city's contribution. And when Grow Grand Island committed half a million dollars for two consecutive years to the Conestoga Marketplace thing, I thought, that's all your money. What are you going to do for two years? But the good news is, you did have other resources, and you've got a lot of projects. I just thought it was a good opportunity to share the good things that Grow Grand Island does. Your participation in the marketing campaign for the Good Life District was important. You got an email from me where I was a little nervous, because I didn't think I was seeing the message that I thought we should have, and you just basically said, "Don't worry, we got it covered," and sure enough, you did. Just a great job overall, so thank you very much.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7N, approving the 2025 contract with Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Gleason.
Hello again. The city contracts with the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation for the administration of the city's economic development program under LB840. The contract is an annual contract and expires on October 1, 2024, so we're going to renew that for the year. They're recommending the one-year contract for fiscal year '25 in a total amount of not to exceed $426,200, which includes an annual administration cost of $355,960 payable quarterly to the organization, and up to $70,240 in reimbursable expense related to prospect development. The fiscal year '25 budget includes all this, as it has in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. And Mrs. Burley, are you here to answer questions, or do you want to present or answer questions?
I would certainly present, given the opportunity.
Please come forward.
Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation, 123 North Locust Street, Suite 201B. The Economic Development Corporation and the city of Grand Island have had a very strong partnership for the last 20 years, and we're certainly honored to continue that strong partnership for the next 10 years as we grow and diversify the city's economic base. Our latest LB840 application that was approved by city council is Vermeer High Plains for an infrastructure grant. That infrastructure is moving along. Sanitary sewer and water have been pulled, and 600 linear feet of concrete has been, was poured last week. And so, we are just finishing up the final touches. Once that infrastructure is complete and cured, Vermeer High Plains will build an $8 million facility without any other use of tax support or incentive dollars. So, LB840 really was a catalyst for that program, utilizing no other tax incentives on there. When LB840 program expanded and included additional uses and eligible activities, so too did the EDC's. too did the EDC's work. Our housing program has just ballooned and expanded. Our Build Grand Island program, which is a revolving loan fund to residential developers, now has a pot of 5.2 million. We offer construction loans to residential developers at zero percent interest for twenty-four months. That loan is repaid in twenty-four months, rather, or when the home sells, whichever happens first. That first set of funds are starting to come back into our pot, so they're continued to revolve and revolve. The last loan that we made was actually for the former OfficeNet building owned by Jim Purney that will house the Wayne State interns that were just here yesterday. So the former OfficeNet building will be rehabilitated. The second floor will be five three-bedroom apartment units for those Wayne State College interns, and then the first floor will be how, home to two, two commercial bays, rather. And then last week, we were announced that our Central Nebraska Growth Foundation, our 501(c)(3) arm of the EDC, was awarded another $845,000 of Nebraska Affordable Trust Fund. This makes $1.7 million that Grand Island will receive from that Nebraska Affordable Trust Fund program. We have never been able to receive these funds in the last twenty, thirty years that this program has been in existence, and in the last twelve months, we received seven, 1.7 million to new housing projects in Grand Island. A few other things is we are currently completing the 2025 to 2029 Community Housing Study that will be wrapped up in December of 2024, and then we will host a housing summit in January of 2025 to release those housing study results. A few other things that I want to put on your calendar that will happen before I'm back in front of you in December for my annual report is in October 30th, Economic Development Corporation and Central Community College Entrepreneurship Center, we're partnering together to bring One Million Cups Program to Grand Island. This is a national entrepreneurial support and programming initiative for our budding entrepreneurs. Also on October 30th, EDC, along with our business partners, will help, host Manufacturing Day, in which we will take high school students with just an inkling of interest in manufacturing. We'll take them to our industries here in Grand Island to give them a taste of what it could feel and look like when they come back to Grand Island, because they will come back to Grand Island and work in our community. And then November 4th is our big idea Grand Island program. This is the third year, and this is our, our version of ABC Shark Tank, an entrepreneurial pitch contest. Our 501(c)(3) arm, Central Nebraska Growth Foundation, offered a very generous gift to the program and the event, and our first place prize is now $10,000. This has increased from $5,000 from the previous year. So a $10,000 cash prize to the entrepreneur that has a great idea and a really strong network that can vote for them. And then last but not least, on November 30th, we will host a learning lunch with, partnering with the Hall County Early Education and Care Coalition, as well as the Greater Grand Island Community Foundation, as we explore the benefits attached to LB-754 that was passed in the last Nebraska legislative session. LB-754 allows for a 100% state income tax credit if and when you, an individual or business donates to an eligible childcare facility. This is a huge deal and will change the landscape of our childcare industry in Grand Island if we can take advantage of it. So again, thank you so very much for your continued support in the Economic Development Corporation, as well as supporting the City of Grand Island as we diversify and grow our economic base.
Congratulations on your recent housing grant. That's really exciting news. Motion is in order, counsel. Ms. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve item 2024-232, the contract with the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote.
We'll take up our public hearings. Eight A, public hearing request from Grand Island Petroleum LLC, 2012 North Webb Road for a Class D liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class D liquor license was received by the city on August 27, 2024. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on September 14, 2024. Notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on August 27, 2024, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
The action item on this matter is Resolution 2024-233. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Landfair.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-233.
Thank you, Mr. Landfair. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Eight B, public hearing request from Tacos Los Hermanos, 602 West Fourth Street for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on September 24, 2024. A notice to general, to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on September 14, 2024. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on August 29, 2024, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspections. Steve, did you want to talk or just if you had questions?
Just if anybody has questions.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass 2024-234.
Thank you. And Ms. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Doubting the liquor license application was approved. Public hearing eight C, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 607 Hermitage Place, Jeanette Staub. Mr. Schmitz, please tell us about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an eight-foot easement to connect a radial feed into a loop feed on the east side of town. We continue to do work over there, north of Bismarck, west of Gun Barrel.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Counsel, is there a motion? Mr. Landfair.
I move that we approve Resolution 2, for, 2024-235.
Thank you, Mr. Landfair. Mr. Stelk.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Resolution 2024-236, approving 2025 contract with Clean Community Systems. Mrs. Nonhof, good evening.
This is just the annual contract with Clean Community Systems. The requirements of the contract have not changed, so we'd ask that you approve it as written.
Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion? Mr. Stelk.
I move to approve the contract with Clean Community Systems.
Ms. Gazinski.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Resolution 2024-237, approving setting the date for Board of Equalization for Parking District Number Three, Off-Street Parking. Mr. Gleason, it's kind of your night tonight, isn't it?
I guess so, Mayor. Thank you. It's got a lot of background and discussion. I'll let you guys read that. The main thing is we're square footage, I'm sorry, they're charged a special assessment based on the entire square footage of their buildings, and we get that from the information from the county assessor. However, if no square footage was available from the assessor, then calculation is done based on outer building dimensions times the number of stories. The 23, 24 and the 24, 25 fiscal years are going to be the same ask, so it's a zero-dollar increase. It's going to be $80,032, which winds up being 4.88 cents per square foot. Using the same $15 credit council provided the prior year, the parking district would have an estimated credit of $10,012, leaving $70,020 of the special assessment on amount collectible. So that'd be the same as last year, so there's zero fiscal impact. The city administration recommends that the council set the date of November 5, 2024 for the Board of Equalization. Notice to the hearing and proposed assessments will be published according to state statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Counsel, a motion is in order. Mr. Landfair.
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-237.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Mr. Stelk.
Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining because I'm a property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Stelk. So noted.
Motion adopted.
Resolution 2024-238, approving labor agreement between the City of Grand Island and the union local number 1597 IBEW AFL-CIO Utilities Department. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. So the, the resolution in front of you, we, the contract for the current utility contract is set to expire September 30th. We've met with the union, negotiated terms of a new contract. The union has voted and is approved on their end, so it's before you tonight to approve. All the changes are listed in the memo. Three-year contract that we will be looking at, some changes to some job classifications, some minor changes to lunch periods, small increase on shift differential, some changes in language on start top, start-stop times for shifts, some clarification language on holidays, vacation carryover, and just kind of hitting the high parts here. There is an addition of some stipends for specific work in electrical, plumbing, and welding. In addition, bilingual pay to match the other contracts throughout the city, some clarification language to promotions, clarification language to grievances, a change in the regis, residency boundaries, change on retirement contributions, some increases on protective clothing, and then also sets the wages for the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass 2024-238.
Mr. Pollak.
I would second that.
Thanks to both of you. Any discussion? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the motion, but I want to, because it complies with the comparability laws in Nebraska. But I want to express, again, my concerns are with the comparability laws. One of the things that I, I believe that a city, when it pays wages and benefits, it needs to blend into the community that it's in, whatever community that happens to be in. But when the wages and benefits get higher than the community that it's in, I think there's some political risk, and it's all regarding the comparability. Comparability laws have been around in Nebraska for a long time, and for those of you who have a computer, I think it's a circular reference. And if you've ever had that problem on a computer, we compare to somebody, and all of these in this contract are comparing to somebody out of state, and they compare to us. So they get a raise, then we get a raise, then we get, and so the circular motion of the comparability laws is problematic, I think, in the community, particularly when it raises it to a level that it becomes a risk. And I think we're getting close to that risk, and I read some of these contracts, and I do believe that they are comparable with, with our array of cities that we compare to. But I'm not remiss on the fact that I don't believe the comparability laws are serving the citizens. So I just want to express that concern, but I'll still be voting for it.
I think a lot of us have concern about the treadmill effect we think we're on.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 2024-239, approving Staley Park Celebration Circle and Pavilion Donation Ground Lease Agreement with Greater Grand Island Community Foundation. Mr. McCoy, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if anybody's visited the Staley Park Gardens recently, you'll, you'll notice that the Friends of the Parks have been very busy. Started with some concrete paths that are going, new concrete paths to the garden. If you go there in the evening, you'll see some new lights in the garden. You'll see themed gardens and so much more. So the next project that is being proposed is a celebration circle and pavilion. It's going to be on the west side of the garden. We really think it's going to be great for community events. It's going to be really great for weddings. And before I, I'd like, with the mayor's permission, I'd like to invite Vicki Dool to the podium. She's kind of the ringleader of the Friends of the Park group. But one, one, one note that I want to make, though, is in the, the resolution and the agreement that was in your packets tonight says, says the agreement is with the community foundation. It was kind of a last-minute change, but the agreement's actually going to be with the contractor, so it's J E M Exteriors. And I think Jill, I made Jill aware of that, and I think we need to have some kind of amendment tonight to, to reflect that.
J E M.
J E M Exteriors is who the agreement will be with. But again, with, with that, I'd like to invite Vicki up here to give a little more information about the Celebration Circle.
Please state your name.
Vicki Dool. Thank you for having us. We are excited, extremely excited about this. In 2017, when we started looking at the garden, it was weed-infested and overgrown, bricks that were in shambles, and it was almost impossible to walk through there. We had a dream. The dream had a price tag, and we thought, well, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? And we thought we'd start in. Little did we know that we would truly get to this point where we are. So we are excited, and we're finishing up the garden. We have three more themed gardens to put in place. We have two of those going in, in this fall, one will be next spring. And then we have the Celebration Circle and Pavilion. That is the largest price tag. We weren't sure that we would ever get there, and through the benevolence of Steve Hornaday and Hornaday Manufacturing, they are footing the bill for that and honoring Marvel and all of the work that Marvel did as a community volunteer and philanthropist. So it'll be the Marvel-Hornaday Celebration Circle and Pavilion. It is a 32-foot diameter circle, concrete circle, and then there's a raised pavilion that's 42-foot by 20-foot, four gable open on both sides, so the side that faces the garden would be perfect for weddings and other celebrations. The side that faces the west where the park is perfect for concerts. Bring your lawn chair, bring your blanket, and, and listen to concerts. It will be an exciting area. We already have a number of people saying, that thing on the west, when do you think it'll be done? Because we're getting married next summer, and so maybe, maybe is there a chance that it could be there for us, weather permitting? They plan to break ground and start working on it next week, and then if Mother Nature plays nicely with us, the pavilion should be done before the holidays, before November Thanksgiving. So we're hoping that that's the case. We'll have a great celebration in the spring when we have the landscaping done. We'll have a great celebration in the spring when we have the landscaping done, the rest of the garden is done, and we'll invite the community to come and enjoy the new garden with us. If you haven't, like Todd said, if you haven't been there, please stop by. You'll see enormous changes from what it used to be. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
I make a motion. We approve 2024-239.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi.
I think, and we have to specify that that's lease agreement.
With J.E.M. Exteriors.
Yes, and I added it to the end of the motion.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll second that motion.
Discussion, Mr. Nickerson?
Well, Vicki, and all of those of you that helped make this city look so beautiful, I want to thank you. I think it's, I've always been told you don't get a second chance to make a first impression. And when I see the improvements that have happened at Stolly Park Gardens, it's phenomenal. And you have to look no further than the flower display out here at City Hall when you drive up. If that doesn't set the tone for what kind of a city we have with a manicured lawn, I don't know what else does. It all adds beauty, it all makes a statement, and that's exactly what you're doing. You're making statements of beauty throughout the city. These projects are just wonderful, and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes just to thank you for that. I plant about 12 petunias a year, and I get pooped out doing those. I don't know how you do all the rest of that, but it takes a beating on this old body, but the work you do is wonderful, and I appreciate your dedication to that. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll echo that, that it's great to have community members stepping up. Stolly Park is very important to me. I raised my kids there, and it's always great to see it taken care of, both by the city and by community members. Also, I think we would be remiss without thanking the Hornady family and Hornady Manufacturing for a donation like that. Once again, that's, I think it's the third or fourth thing that I've heard them donate to the city in the last year, so it's another, we're just pretty fortunate to have a business like that here in town.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I am grateful, Vicki, for all the volunteerism, and Jim, not only here, I mean, but we heard it earlier tonight at Grow Grand Island, we have it at the library, we have it at the Horticulture with Brad, and we have volunteerism throughout the parks. And so I'm grateful for the volunteerism in the community, and we're grateful for you guys for coming tonight, and this is going to be a great project.
Okay, so this first vote will be on the amendment. And then we just need another motion to approve with the amendment.
Mr. Sheard? Or Mr. Hossi?
I move that we, that's fine. I'll do it.
Is that right with you?
Go ahead. Okay. I move that we approve the amended 2024-239.
Mr. Still?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have, okay.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
I also want to mention, last Thursday, Todd McCoy and Barry Burrows and I were at the Stolly Park Flower Garden for the dedication of the beautiful bench in the garden as donated by the AOK ladies. So there's all sorts of great volunteerism happening in our parks. What a difference they make. Thank you so much. Resolution 2024-240, approving Veterans Sports Complex Storage Batting Cage Donation Ground Lease Agreement. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is another very similar type project where one of our community partners is offering to donate a structure to us, to the, at the Veterans Complex. This was a plan that was put in place a few years ago after the Veterans Complex was built. The ABCDD Softball League really wanted to see some batting cages and a building to kind of serve their needs. Kind of the plan that we had created was that we were building, the city built the batting cages, and then the softball league, their plan was to build the building. They've, over the years, have done this at Ryder, when they were at Ryder Park initially, they've invested in scoreboards and that type of thing. They use some of their proceeds to make improvements to the facility, and they're doing that again here. This is a 1,000-square-foot building. It butts right up against the three batting cages that are out there. They actually, they're four days a week for their leagues, and they'll be able to use that building to, you know, have some of their equipment in and that type of thing. So it'll be, it'll be a good benefit to them, and it'll be a nice, another asset for us. So we're asking that council approve an agreement with ABCDD Softball League so that we can, so that this building can be constructed.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Counsel, a motion is in order. Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve 2024-240.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak?
And I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Sheard?
Todd, I just have a question about the timing of this. When would this be, when would construction start?
Now, now. They've actually done like the very basic beginning of it, but it would be probably done before the softball league for next year. So it'd be done in the spring.
So when we look at that area that's been talked about a lot with the Good Life District, is there a, I hate using the word guarantee, but is there an understanding that that's going to stay put? Do we know? I mean, do we have a, any look at that? Has that been discussed?
I mean, as far as, you know, from my standpoint, you know, the softball league is very strong in Grand Island. I would, I would think that they, we would need to have facilities for them, and that's the perfect place for them. You know, with the Good Life District, there's maybe some, talks about some more fields and that type of thing, where we can do some more things, but at the very basic needs, I would think we would still be providing a softball, you know, recreational softball for those groups. So I, I guess I don't see a change for those, for those groups.
I've just seen, you know, we've seen different proposals or mockups of the land, and some of them have different layouts. I just want to make sure that we don't build this beautiful thing and somebody knocks it down in six months or two years. I don't even, this is a question for you.
I don't see that as being, I mean, we have the batting cages, it kind of sits off by themselves. It's not something that would, I guess, be in the way. I think it would be more of an asset to keep. I mean, it's a.
I agree that we want to keep it and put it on it.
So I would think that, like I said, I can never project the future, but I think this is something that would be an asset for sure. I would, I don't see any plans of something that it would be in the way, put it that way.
Mr. Mayor, do you know of any, I mean, what your thoughts are on this?
I don't, actually, Mr. McCoy's probably in a better position because you know precisely where this is, and Mrs. Nahnhoff just put her light on, so maybe she can shed light on this matter.
As of right now, there are no plans to remove any softball fields, any fields from the Veterans Complex. That's not in the works. No plans have actually been finalized. The kicker is with the way this ground lease works is, once they have built it, it actually becomes a property of the City of Grand Island. Use of the building will require a separate agreement after this. So that's where the future agreement, this is, this agreement is just allowing them to build it on city property at their expense, and then the city takes it over once it's done. There's going to be a secondary agreement that's going to have to come through for the use of that building, and that's where discussions of long-term use and that will come in. But that's just a little bit premature for what we're doing tonight.
Okay, well, I just, I think it's a great facility. I just want to make sure that it gets its life as intended. So thanks, Todd.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10A, consideration of approving salary ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Ms. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances.
And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Consideration of approving salary ordinance. Mr. Schmidt, please tell us about this.
Thank you. This just, the union contract you just approved, this is just a salary ordinance that follows that allows us to pay the wages for the upcoming fiscal year. So a few other things, just some classification movements that go along with the contract. There's a part-time classification that gets tied to this contract, some amendments and shift differential, safety clothing, the stipends I mentioned earlier, and then, again, setting the wages. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a motion? Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve 9988.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 9989, consideration of approving a request to vacate Niemuth subdivision and approve Niemuth Farm subdivision located east of Quant Road and south of 1R Road. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we suspend the statutory rules.
Mr. Pollak?
And I would second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Please tell us about ordinance number 9989.
Evening. The applicant is requesting to vacate Niemuth subdivision and to then replat the land and create Niemuth Farms. With the vacation, they are intending to put back property at their farming, back with the farmland to the south, and then to reshape their lot to encompass the existing farm set. The Planning Commission had a meeting on September 4th, and they recommended approval to vacate the plat and to replat the land into Niemuth Farm subdivision.
Thank you, Rashad. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 9989? Mr. Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve ordinance number 9989.
Thank you, Mr. Still. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 9990, consideration of amending Chapter 23-21 of the Grand Island City Code relative to the telephone occupation tax. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Hossi?
I move to suspend the statutory rules.
Thank you, and Mr. Pollak?
And I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Gleason, for the umpteenth time, you're back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. The city currently has a 5% occupation tax on telecommunications services. The state of Nebraska in 2024 legislation established a cap of 4%, so this is, and it becomes effect October 1st of 2024, so we're trying to do this to meet statutory deadline. The draft ordinance reduces the tax rate from 5% to 4%, removes the sunset, and removes the language pertaining to the debt service for 911 Center. Finance staff has reviewed the bond transcript from the 2016 Public Safety Bond to ensure this change does not break or void any debt covenants. It does not. The original bond language was passed to allow for a priority tax levy to fund it, but that option was never utilized by the city. So we're, the city staff has directed, has drafted the ordinance to authorize the full 4% to be collected for the general fund, and internally, we'll use those funds to continue to pay the debt service for the 911 Center until it's fully paid. Then you have all the facts and figures in there, the fiscal impact, the current 5% occupation tax revenue, collection annually is around 325,000, so the estimated reduction is 65,000 annually. The city would, city administration recommends that you approve these changes.
Thank you. Mr. Hossi?
I would move to approve ordinance number 9990.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. Mr. Connolly?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 9991, consideration of approving assessments for Foner Park Business Improvement District. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Ms. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Gleason, tell us about ordinance number 9991.
This ordinance is the action item from earlier in this evening when you said as the Board of Equalization for the Foner Park Business Improvement District, so this is just allowing the city to finalize those assessments and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Counsel? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve ordinance 9991.
Thank you, Mr. Still. Thank you. Any discussion?
We did, yes. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Excellent meeting, Council members. We have completed our agenda. We are adjourned.